Alright, you ready? Monica says make the motions and Monica will second. You guys ready? Good evening! Yes, is this working? Good evening, everybody! Nope. Testing. Can you hear me?
No, it's not loud.
I'm a little teapot. Nope. Does your mic work?
Yeah, but it's not loud. Just yell.
Alright. Gavel. I've never gotten to use this before, and now the mics work. Okay. Good evening, everybody! Welcome to the, tonight's September 12th meeting for the Glendale Elementary School District. This, let's, please let the minute show that myself and Ms. Wilson are here in person. Ms. Pimentel is on the phone and Mr. Jaramillo is currently delayed, he's on his way. Alright, Ms. Segada Jones, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, President Martinez, members of the board? No, there are not.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Alright. And the chair votes aye. That motion passes. Please join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Okay, moving right into our agenda, onto the special recognition, Ms. Segada Jones.
Yes, President Martinez, we are really excited today that we are going to do some recognitions. We're going to begin with the school recognition of the monthly student attendance. If we can step down to do that. Remember what we do is each month we look at the school that has the highest percentage of students in attendance, and then we have our traveling trophy. So we'll be beginning that again this year, and this is for August. Okay, beginning this school year, last year we ended in May with the school that had the highest perfect attendance, the highest attendance rate was Horizon School, so... So, beginning this year, the school that begins the traveling trophy for attendance is Discovery. Congratulations. Congratulations. Right now, we are going to begin our next celebration, and we're so excited about this. This is all of our students who have made their, have scored the highest scores they can on our state assessment, so really excited about that. So I'd like all the audience, please join us in the tunnel and recognize our students, please. Everybody come join us. We really want to celebrate these students. Ms. Sherry Don Emerson, are we ready? Five, four, three, two, one! Students go that way. Students go that way. Now, could we have our principals, you're getting in line? They're over there. They're on the other side. Principals? Principals? You need to be on this side. Yep, principals and teachers that are here. Yep, this side, please.
Single file. Keep up, no gaps.
Let's just move down, Parker. Good evening again, parents and community, board members, Superintendent Segada Jones. We are so excited again to honor your students this evening for such a huge achievement of scoring a perfect score on the state test. Another round of applause for our students, we're so excited for them! And I have the great honor of reading their names, so when we read your name, we want you to come up here and shake the hands of our superintendent, our board members, and your teachers and principal and assistant principal, because they're so excited to celebrate you this evening.
And the students, once you receive your medal, we want you to step forward, and Ms. Parsons is going to take your picture, okay?
Alright, don't forget that part, we need a good picture for your parents and to post everywhere. Alright, here we go. So our Glendale American student that's being honored for a perfect scale score in eighth grade mathematics is Christina Petu Kane. Thank you. Our next student is from Bicent-- several students are from Bicentennial South, and we're going to start with Paulina Gomez, who got a perfect score in third grade mathematics. And before our administrators step away, we also want to acknowledge from Bicentennial South, unfortunately, they were not able to be here with us today, Adrian Navarez and Jasmine Sandoval Willetti. So let's give a round of applause to those students who were not able to be here today. Thank you administrators and teachers. Next, we have Glenn F. Burton. We want to honor a student who received a perfect score in English Language Arts, fourth grade, Jasmine Simmons, come on up. Thank you, Glenn F. Burton. I heard the family say, "Repeat." Go on for three, there you go, "Three-peat," alright. Alright, next we want to invite up our Challenger Middle, Challenger School administrators and staff. And we have some students from Challenger. We want to start by honoring a student who got a perfect score, scale score, in third grade mathematics, Sampson Canisales. Next, we have another student who got a perfect score in third grade mathematics, Eileen Jocelyn. Ellen, Ellen Jocelyn. Next, we have a student who was unable to be here with us today, but we still want to honor the student for third, a perfect score in third grade mathematics as well, Logan Lada. Let's give a round of applause for that student. Our next student, who also got a perfect score in third grade mathematics, was Isaiah Ostos. Our next student from Challenger Middle School got a perfect score also in third grade mathematics, and that is Teresa Vu. And our final student from Challenger, who was unable to be with us today, and we still want to honor him, is an eighth grader who scored a perfect score in mathematics, and that student is Mohammed Hassani. And Mr. Hortsman would like to mention that several of our third grade students, three of them came from Sonia Mia's class. Thank you, Challenger. Next, we have Desert Spirit. Come on up administrators from Desert Spirit and teachers. From Desert Spirit, we have a student in seventh grade mathematics that got a perfect score, come on up Alejandro Loyah. Thank you, Desert Spirit. Next, we're going to invite up the staff from Discovery School. From Discovery, we are honoring a student in fifth grade who got a perfect scale score in English Language Arts, Dani Nguyen. We also want to honor a student that was unable to be here from Discovery, Said Amin Mirsifedin. And he got a perfect score in seventh grade math, so we just want to make sure to mention that student. Our next student from Discovery is also for a perfect scale score in seventh grade mathematics, Kai Coleman. Thank you, Discovery. Next, we're going to honor a student from GEO, from Glendale Elementary Online. And we are honoring a student who got a perfect score in third grade mathematics, Melanie Perez Lopez. Thank you, GEO. Next, we're going to invite up the staff from Horizon School. And we're going to start off by honoring a student who was, did attend this evening but wasn't able to stay, and that student got a perfect score in eighth grade mathematics, Valerie Callwood Winch. Our next student that we would like to honor is a student who got a perfect score in third grade mathematics, Bryce Ryan. Our next student from Horizon got a perfect scale score in sixth grade mathematics, William Zah. Our next student received a perfect scale score in seventh grade mathematics, Nicholas Lisarraga. Our next student also received a perfect score in eighth grade mathematics from Horizon, Jocelyn Ryan. And yes, her brother in third grade is Bryce Ryan. And I believe this is the third round for Jocelyn. Thank you, Horizon. Next, we'd like to invite up the staff from William C. Jack. Alright, and tonight we are honoring a student in third grade who got a perfect scale score in mathematics, Leonardo Dunlevy. Also from William C. Jack, we want to honor a student who got a perfect scale score in fourth grade mathematics, Mia Areola Arciga. And Mr. Jose Chavez Diaz was her, was her teacher, so thank you so much for being here with us today. Did I say that wrong? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. And that is all for all of our students, we want to give a big congratulations to all of our students, parents. Okay, now for our students, we have a special surprise on behalf of Gusto, which is our education foundation here in Glendale Elementary School District. All the students, get your tickets out. Everyone, you have your ticket, find your ticket. And we'll read the number, and one of you is going to be the lucky winner. And Mr. Martinez will tell you what that is, and then the family will also be a lucky winner as well. Okay, so here we go. Get your numbers ready. And tell her what she won?
Oh, I need to tell you what you won. So, from Gusto, I got a call saying we need to do something for all of these kids that have done such an amazing job in kicking their test scores. A perfect score, I mean, that is absolutely crazy. So, to help celebrate your perfect score, we have for you a Walmart gift card for $100.
And for the family, if you'll please come up, we'd like to present you with a GSDopoly game. We want to promote family games, so families? And we'll do the family, we'll do a photo with everybody, then we'll do a family photo, how's that? Family and friends. Yeah, all of them, you got more?
How many did you bring?
Come on, come on, family and friends. And also, we have the Burton family, where's the Burton family at? Come on, Burton family. So let's do the fam-- you want to do a family photo first, from friends? Congratulations. Principals, those of you that your students did not, were unable to attend this evening, could you please come get their certificates and medals so that you can honor those tomorrow with the school celebration?
I did text, or I received a text from Ms. Pimentel earlier today, because she knew she was going to have horrible cellphone receptions, but she did want to me, wanted me to pass on my congratulations for all of you. Such a great job, and she wishes you, wishes you well. Also, Ms. Bartels also texted me at midnight last night, because of the time difference, so she's texted me at 12:01 a.m. this morning, and says, "Congratulations," and that you all did a great job.
With that, families and friends that came out for this evening, students, we couldn't be more proud of you and the work that you do. You could not do this without the support of your amazing families, but more importantly, you can do it without the support of your amazing teachers and administrators at your school. So congratulations to everyone, thank you teachers for coming out and supporting your students. Thank you, teachers, for coming out and supporting your students. We appreciate it. You may get up and go enjoy more cupcakes if you'd like, or you're welcome to stay.
We will call a five-minute recess to give everyone a chance to get settled, and then we'll reconvene at 6:05. You can still talk. You got, you got two minutes. All right, moving on in our agenda, we do have some calls to the public this evening. The public is invited to address the board on any issue within its jurisdiction, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Governing board members are not permitted to discuss or take legal action on matters raised during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. However, the law permits board members to do the following at the conclusion of an open call to the public. A, respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the board. B, ask staff to review a matter. Or C, ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Those wishing to address the board should complete a call to the public form and submit it to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board unless provided other direction by the board. At the outset of the speaker's remark, the speaker should state his or her name. We do have two calls to the public, starting with Ms. Emily Aitken. Just check to make sure that the mic's on when you get up there.
Check, check, one, two. Good afternoon. My name is Emily Aitken. I've been an eighth grade teacher at Glendale American for five years now. I'm here tonight to address the lack of communication between the district and its employees surrounding the retention stipend. I understand that the retention money is not promised. I understand that the district no longer has ESER funds. Still, everyone in this room knows how much thought goes into a teacher's budget, how much you have to scrimp and save, and how many ways you have to stretch your paycheck. Letting your employees know that this money would not be coming the moment you found out, likely some time ago, seems the least you could do. My fiance and I are getting married in two weeks. Had I known this very important information, I would have made different decisions. Now, I'm not sure how I'm going to pay for my wedding and my honeymoon. Imagine that you're a teacher, and for the last three years, your grade was given a grant to take a field trip in April, and every year it's if funds are available. And you say to the students, you say that to the students at the beginning of each year, but the funds arrive and you go in April. This year comes up, and again, like every year, you tell them if the funds are available. Every week, someone asks you, but you say you don't know because you don't. Then you find out you can't go. Weeks before the scheduled field trip, the money didn't come in. Do you tell the kids right away? Or do you tell, or do you wait till the day of the field trip and tell them? That same analogy applies to family vacations and business operations like extra pay. I would argue that working in a Title I district requires an extreme amount of skill and dedication. The students need and deserve consistency in their education. Turnover will increase, and teachers will not stay for extended periods of time with no retention stipend and no raises built into the salary. There's a teacher at my school who has the exact same years' experience as me, but because she was hired this year, she's being paid $3,750 more per year than I am. Again, my teaching career started in this district, right out of college. How am I rewarded with this loyalty, with less pay than new hires with the same experience? I don't understand how it's possible that this district compensates teachers with experience outside the district more than their own loyal teachers with the same amount of experience within the district. I don't understand why this hasn't ever been changed. I don't understand how this isn't an issue. I'm also going to go ahead and presume that there's not going to be any retention money for next year. What plan is there in place to increase the pay of employees who have been loyal and still their income has fallen short of new hires? Raises are not built into the salary schedule. Therefore, a retention stipend has become the expected norm for returning employees. If there isn't a plan in place, please inform me before I sign my contract in February. The meet and confer video came out in April. I signed my contract months before that. I don't want to, I don't want to leave my school. I love my school. I love my administration. I love my fellow teachers. But this is my life, and this is my future, and I have to plan accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next call to the public, Ms. Jessica Peck.
Hello, board members and Superintendent Sagata Jones. For those who don't know, I'm Jessica Peck, G E A president, a Glendale teacher for the past 15 years, and the proud parent of two Glendale students in the dual-language program. I also served on the meet and confer committee for 2019 through 2023, and was very active in volunteering for getting the bond and override passed last year. I'm here tonight to represent my members and my coworkers with their concerns about retention stipends. To give you some background, every September for the past three years, Glendale graciously used ESER funding to give sizable retention stipends of 8%, 9%, 10%, which were some of the highest amounts in Phoenix. As we know, unfortunately, ESER funding has ended, which has led to some serious questions about the feasibility of continuing retention stipends. In the meet and confer agreement from five months ago, the district agreed to pay a retention stipend of some sort if funding allowed. Historically, stipends were given in September, but that is not what's in the agreement. We have now been back for seven weeks, and G E A has asked district leadership four to five times about the stipend plans or when the decision will be made. As of yesterday, there is still no decision or planned timeframe. Staff members have been asking G E A leaders daily about this issue. At some sites, it's 10 people asking; at other sites, it's 30 people asking. If I go with a low estimate of 15 people per site, that's over 180 employees that have been asking us, and we have been telling them, "We don't know. We don't know. Please be patient. Please be patient." We have also been told that they should not call payroll to receive information about this pay. So employees have been in the dark, wondering for two months, and I don't know what else to tell them. G E A does believe that employees should receive timely clarity on what they can expect in terms of compensation. As an analogy, teachers are expected to submit clear, long-range lesson plans in advance, and they would like some clear, long-term financial plans in response. Even if the decision is that there are no retention stipends, the staff deserves to have that information communicated clearly with empathy and explanation. And for what it's worth, there have been retention stipends this year in Peoria, Deer Valley, Glendale Union as well, and Washington, which are our neighboring districts. Lastly, I want to say that I do appreciate the difficulties in managing a massive budget that has ever-changing income and expenses. It is a moving target. I do understand that budgeting takes time, deliberation, and flexibility. I use those skills in my personal life with my own personal budgeting. To me, unforeseen challenges. However, now that we are almost two months into school, we do think it's time for the district to commit to a timeframe for decision-making and communication. Thank you for your service as school board members. I know it's very difficult, and thank you for your understanding of this perspective.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just following the quorum, we can add something after each public comment, correct?
You may, you may ask staff to review a matter, or ask the matter to be put on a future agenda, or respond to any criticism made.
Okay. I'd like to ask, to put something on the future agenda. It seems like there's over 100 employees, based on the public comment, that are asking for better communication. I would like to ask if we can see what plan there is in place for teachers that have been loyal, and to develop some sort of communication plan so that we are being more, speaking with teachers with more clarity, and so that way they can make future life plans with more ease. That's my request. I don't know how to condense that.
I understand, I understand the gist of it. Yes, we will, we will talk about that when we set the next agenda.
Yep.
All right, moving on in our current agenda, we're moving into the consent agenda. Are there any comments or remarks on the consent agenda items? If not, if there is a motion to adopt or approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, thank you. Moving on to action items, our lone action item today, the policy revision second reading. Ms. Sagata Jones?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, you have before you all the policy revisions. We, this is second read.
Are there any questions or comments on the policy revisions? I think they're all minor revisions from, they're just same ones.
There were no questions last time.
I reviewed the, I reviewed them before the last meeting, and I noticed there were some minor grammatical mistakes, but I can, I don't have it on me right now, but I will bring it back up next time.
We can look at those, board member. How do you know?
I think there was, I think like grammatical errors.
Yeah, it was really minor.
Without, yeah. All right. Is there a motion to approve the policy revisions, second reading?
I'll move to approve the policy revisions, second reading.
Second.
All right, Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, thank you. Moving on to future meeting and agenda request, or agenda item request, looks like we have a busy couple of months coming up here, Ms. Sagata Jones?
Yes, we do. President Martinez will have a special meeting on September 26th. That will begin the process for the board's self-evaluation, and that deadline is October 30th. And then you'll go into the annual financial reports and any bylaws, and then we will also be presenting at that time the 2024 state assessment data.
Okay. Moving on to the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a request to get on the agenda at some point, a report on our absenteeism at the schools. I think there's, it was because of a, one of the sessions that I took at the law conference went over chronic absenteeism, and so I think it would be a good idea to have that report on one of the agendas.
Yes, board member Wilson, we can do that because Arizona, the state of Arizona just released their chronic absenteeism report too that they shared, so we can definitely plan for that.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the summary of current events, Ms. Sagata Jones?
Yes, I just want to thank all the parents and the teachers for coming out tonight. I want to recognize the artwork in the back from Smith and American, and also, I want to recognize, we had our staff employee spelling bee the other night, and Katie Everniss from Jack won, so we're excited. She won last year too, so we're excited, and thank you to all the employees that participated in that spelling bee. At this time, also, I do have a PowerPoint presentation for my superintendent's report this time, and so I am probably going to step down to do that so I can make sure I can read that.
Moving on to the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a request to get on the agenda at some point, a report on our absenteeism at the schools. I think there's, it was because of a, one of the sessions that I took at the law conference went over chronic absenteeism, and so I think it would be a good idea to have that report on one of the agendas.
Yes, board member Wilson, we can do that because Arizona, the state of Arizona just released their chronic absenteeism report too that they shared, so we can definitely plan for that.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the summary of current events, Ms. Sagata Jones?
Yes, I just want to thank all the parents and the teachers for coming out tonight. I want to recognize the artwork in the back from Smith and American, and also, I want to recognize, we had our staff employee Spelling Bee the other night, and Katie Everniss from Jack won, so we're excited. She won last year too, so we're excited, and thank you to all the employees that participated in that Spelling Bee. At this time, also, I do have a PowerPoint presentation for my superintendent's report this time, and so I am probably going to step down to do that so I can make sure I can read that. There's a clicker up there. There's a clicker up there? You want to, you want to work it, Aviana? Great, go ahead. Will it work? Here's what I'd like to discuss with you this evening, just kind of give you an update of where we are. A lot of things have been going on, and you've known, attending the law conference, some of these things have been brought to your attention regarding new legislation now that we're out of session, and some of these bills are passed and are going into, into law. So the first things we're going to talk about, here's the list. Minimum wage is unpaid time off initiative, Proposition 206, Department of Labor rule increasing minimum salary threshold. increasing minimum salary threshold for exempt employees, decompression phase one, compensation history, teacher salary increase, Esser funding, meet and confer recommendations for FY 2425, and Fitch Rating Annual Surveillance Update. That sounds like a, surveillance is a really kind of negative word, but that is what they call it, and that's from the financial Fitch rating scale that they use. So we didn't make up surveillance, that's what they actually call it. Next slide, please. So the first one is Proposition 206. I just want to remind everybody, the minimum wage paid out time off initiative. So we have to increase Arizona's minimum wage from 805 per hour in 2016 to 12, all the way through 2020, and then you see the increments by year, and they're listed in chronological order there. So you can see where it started at 805, and what we've had to do to increase that all the way up to January 2020, and then after that, the minimum wage increases to the national's cost of living as it increases per current law. January 1st of 2025, we predict it will be about $1475, and this impacts the budget by $130,000, $130,116.19. So that is something that, remember, minimum wage goes up, we don't receive extra funding for that, it has to be increased by law. Next slide. It's not working? Did you use a clicker today? In your PowerPoint? When you guys did yours, did you use a clicker?
Yes, it was over.
Christian, could you see if the clicker is over there? We used it today for training.
There was two in one on the notebook.
There were two in one, didn't work. Can we get the, our apologies? Is that it? Can I just do it through my PowerPoint? Let me just to read the PowerPoint.
This machine doesn't have a license for PowerPoint, so it's kicking us out every time.
Whose machine can we use? We've used PowerPoint before.
The other option is if we can go through the Internet, I have it.
Can we go through the Internet? We can do it that way? Okay, apologies, we're back on. So this is the overview of what minimum wage and paid time off initiatives Proposition 206 was about. Next, we go to the rule increasing minimum salary threshold for exempt employees, another law that we need to respond to by January 1st of 2025, and further beginning July 21st of 2027. The minimum salary level for exempt status will be paid and updated every three years to keep pace with changes in worker salaries and reflect current earnings and data. Again, not funded. Here we go to decompression phase one that we did. We recognize the differences that happen in pays. We understand that when new employees come in. We went through that decompression study. We were able to go through the first phase of that, and we are still working with consultants looking at phase two. Just to recap what happened in phase one, it was to bring all positions to a median, 81 positions, varying increases, includes minimum wage movement. Remaining positions were a 2% increase with the 13 positions. The current employee increases matches increased replacement. There was no phasing, there was a one-year increase continuation plan, and that project for phase one, which we did, was at 8.75 million. And as I stated, we just met with the consultant last week to look at phase two, to continue to try to address decompression. Compensation history, let's go back to this. So for fiscal year 2018-19, 10 proceeds, 10% increase to the base, to me, Governor Ducey's 20 by 20. Then in 2019, 2020, a 5% increase to the base. 2021, a 5% increase to the base. 2122, for returning employees, a retention stipend of 8%, and a $500 stipend for classified staff paid in two payments. And then for fiscal year 2223, for returning employees, a retention stipend of 9%, and then 2324, for returning employees, a retention stipend of 10%. Implamation decompression study increased varied based on job titles, and then all teachers received a $10,000 increase to try to help with the decompression. Teacher salaries, that's the history for you from 1819, $38,000, not where we wanted it ever to be, was our starting salary, and now for 2425, it is at $50,000. And then you'll see where I mentioned before on the previous slide, from 2324, there was an additional $10,000 for that school year only. So the total increase from $38,000 to $50,000, increase of $12,000, or a 32% increase to try to get us up to be competitive with surrounding districts. So Esser funding. So retention stipend history, as we talked before when we presented these in 2122, there's an 8% stipend, 2223, a 9% stipend, last year, 2324, a 10% stipend. We were able to do that through Esser funding, okay? So that did occur. We know that Esser funding, that grant sunsets September 30th. We are currently working to reconcile, and then you will see that stated again by September 30th. So that's what we're, it will be reflected by September 30th, that's the deadline by the state. So that's what we've done with Esser funding as far as stipends to do. So then the meet and confer recommendations for fiscal year 2425. It's stated if funds are available, have a sliding scale retention and longevity stipend. We paid attention to that, that was, that came out of meet and confer and the work that they did, that could we try to address those that are committed to Glendale Elementary School District? And so to look at longevity and take that into consideration. What you, was presented to the governing board, and what you accepted was to look at a 0 to 4 years with GSD up to 8%, 5 to 9 years with GSD up to 9%, and 10-plus years with GSD up to 10%. And this was for anyone that started the year with us and stayed with us in the previous year. So the percentage separation must be differentiated in a balanced approach between the tiers in order to avoid gross disparities between the sliding scales. That's what you voted on. Again, that was if funds were available. So what we've been doing since then, trying to reconcile Esser, which does not end until September 30th. Also, we received notice, and this happens every year, the Fitch Rating Annual Surveillance Update. We received notice Tuesday evening, and we were giving the heads-up about where we were going to fall based on Fitch Annual Update. The rating outlook has been revised to negative from stable, so we have a negative outlook. The bond rating remains unchanged, which is great, but the negative outlook is concerning, because we don't want to go out and sell bonds with a negative outlook. So each year, they go back and they look at where we are, our structural deficits with finance, and then they review and they can change ratings. We received that call Tuesday night to prepare us. Wednesday morning, Mr. Barrigan and I, with our financial advisor, Bill Davis, who presents often, we asked Bill if we could please speak to Fitch Rating, because we needed to understand the potential label of a rating outlook to be negative, and also, at that time, they were considering changing the bond ratings. So that's what we were faced with. Mr. Barrigan and I spoke with them yesterday morning, 45, 50 minutes, probably, virtual. We were, I think there were four different time zones. We were very gracious and happy that they took the call to listen to us. We explained what our contingencies are, that we are working always to be financially solvent, and we answered the questions that they had. They had until today, we had 24 hours from then to agree with the factuals, and the factuals were true, everything they stated, but the rating would then become public, and I believe that went public probably 5:00 Eastern Time, we think, somewhere around there. So it's public. So that's how we'll be rated, it's a public document. When we were having this conversation, they asked us a lot of questions. We've noticed that you're declining enrollment. It's been declining since COVID. We explained to them during COVID, we all went online. We took attendance based off parents turning in attestation forms, and that's how we received our EDM that year. Not all parents handed in those forms. We lost about 1,000 kids that we didn't get funded for. That impacted us tremendously. We explained that, that it was COVID. Got through that, they understood that. We went through the contingency, everything we're doing with that. They understood that. Then we, they, some of the other questions they asked was, well, you have this decline in enrollment, what does the future look like? We said we have our demographer, he will come back after the 40th day count, which is in October. He will present to us the new demographic study. What we, what we see, based on what we had from the last demographic study, and what we are experiencing in our schools, that the decline is at a faster rate than what we anticipated. So that's concerning to them. We told them what we were doing to try to increase student enrollment. They talked about charter schools around us, they talked about new development around us. We answered those questions. We really won't know the new development around us, what that will bring us in terms of student enrollment, until we actually have that demographic study in October. It's premature, and he won't even begin on that until October. So that's premature. They also asked me, if I was a declining enrollment district, why do I continue to give raises to my staff? Why did I give stipends? They want to know how many staff I had riffed, and why I didn't riff. They also, we also said, hey, we closed five schools, we're working extremely hard. Through attrition, we really were fortunate that we didn't have to riff teachers. Why do you continue to give them raises or stipends? Great question, because at the same time, I know I'm declining, I'm still trying to increase student enrollment, but I have to retain staff. I need staff. I can't lose staff. I can't lose my quality staff. That was our response. We thought that would come back with a stable outlook. It did not. It came back with a negative outlook. We now have to report, and we will be doing that, what we are going to do so that we don't continue to go to a negative outlook. All this happening during this time, I'm going to go back to something else where we were also asked some of the same questions, and we'll be asked them September 27th, I believe, again, probably. During the Capitol lawsuit, Mr. Barrigan and I, he testified, we were both down at court all of June, every day, four days a week, testified. They asked us, the judge asked us to clarify, if we were a declining district, why do we continue to give stipends and raises to employees? The attorney, the attorneys did. The judge asked for clarification, because he couldn't believe we gave the 20%, remember? So we said that we used Esser funds to do that, and that our staff knew it was one-time funding, and that when that funding ended, so would stipends. We have been very clear about that. So we answered those questions. The Capitol lawsuit, the judge is reading thousands and thousands of pages right now, and we will not get a decision until after the first of the year. At the same time, we've been working with SFOB, Schools Facility Board, SFB now, and some of you know that, principals, they've been on your site doing inspections, they're supposed to come out and review and look at facilities. We know, and you know, as teachers, administrators, and other staff members, we have buildings that are old and falling apart, and we need them to be replaced. Their response, and they've been very clear with us, is that you are a declining enrollment district. Just take your kids and move them to these other schools. You have capacity. We understand that. We've done that. Some schools, some of you are busting out the seams, some of you are not. So our response is, we don't care that we're a declining enrollment. Our students in GSD deserve to be in new buildings and environments, and so does staff. Our students in GSD deserve to be in new buildings and environments, and so does staff. And we've been very clear about that. We don't care we're declining. It doesn't matter. Children deserve to be in good buildings, not buildings 75-plus years old, not buildings with cracks that I can see inside outside with. That's not what students deserve. We will continue to fight for that. On the 27th, the hearing has been postponed so many times, I don't know how many times it's been postponed, four times? Postponed four times. It's postponed again from June. It was going to be in September. Now it's in December, but they couldn't do it in December. It was too hard for them to make those arrangements, so we really don't know when it's going to begin. But on the 27th, they've reached out to us and want to talk to us, and we hope perhaps there's some type of settlement. That's what we're at. All that being said, it's very clear that we all know we're declining, and we all know we have budget deficits. And how we were able to fund stipends before that grant sunsets September 30th, we know that. So the decision has to be made. This, I'm going to be honest, we did not anticipate this. We did not anticipate that. We were, you know, you hear you're blindsided. We were blindsided by that. Did not anticipate that to be a negative outlook. We've never had that. So we will work diligently to remove that negative outlook, but it's going to take all of us to do that. Let me go back to, I want to go back to, well, let me just, I don't know where that is, and let me go back to that. So in order for us, we're hoping through the demographic study that we will be able to be flatlined, all right? We're hoping, but what the demographic study said before, if you remember, that in 2030, we'd be flatlined. Well, we've got about five years to go, and those five years, it's supposed to decrease. We're hoping that we will get to see a flatline because of, you know, the residential areas coming up around us. We're not sure of that. So we have been pushing a couple of things, different marketing things to get students. We have other marketing ideas in place. It's going to take all of us. When students leave your schools, you need to ask why and where they're going. We all say, and I've said it too, and I've said it to you, and I've said it in board meetings, that our students a lot go to charter schools. That is true. They also go to Alhambra. They also go to Peoria. They also go to Cartwright. They also go to Deer Valley. We have those reports that say where students are. There are kids. Some of our own kids leave our own schools to go to a different school within our district. That's great, but I would ask myself, why are they leaving my school? And there could be a lot of reasons, right? It could be, a lot of reasons. But we need to be very focused on what it is that we have to offer, what we can do to get our students back and keep them here. And that's what we're, we're working on. We do believe if we're able to get replacement schools, because it seems to work for charter schools, that if you build it, they'll come, right? So we're hoping, and I, you've heard me say, hope is not a strategy. I have a strategy for that hope, and that's what we're going to try to work towards. So please know that we worked very hard trying to do that, and we have not lost sight at that. I listened to the call a public. I understand your concerns. I understand you want to know. In the agreement, it did not say when. It did not give you a timeline. It just said if funds were available. I've shared with you the timeline. The timeline, I am not, and you should know me by now, I am not going to make a decision until we have all the information. And we got new information, and my decision was, I didn't want to make a decision on stipends until the demographic study. Until at least I saw what October enrollment meant and how steep was this. Because what it takes to do stipends and what you saw it took to do the decompression, that will get me through 2526. We're going to get through 2425. 2526 is shaky. So we had to build contingencies to get us through 2526. So do you take the money and give stipends, or do you get your head above water and get through 2526 and work really hard to get students back? Then you're hit with a negative outlook, and you're like, man, I am drowning. I can tread water, but drowning, I don't do well. So that's where we, where we were on that. In order for us to give stipends in a 2526, we did the calculations, and you would have to have, we would have to have an increase of 713 students. So that's the goal. We need to get 713 students back. That's the goal. That's the calculation. That's what we need. So the final thoughts, and I understand the concerns, understand stipends and you wanting to know, there's a lot that goes behind making decisions, and I hear you. But we're not going to make decisions without the facts, and we're not going to make decisions that's going to put the district in further deficit than what we are and what we're facing. We've been very cautious about that. So for the 2425 school year, we will give stipends. They will be based off the meet and confer recommendations that that committee did. And now, and you're going to tell me, I'm going to get a call tomorrow, well, when is it coming? You can have, you can be assured that you will receive a stipend on the December, on or before, I'm going to say, on or before the December 31 pay period. That's when you'll receive it. On or before, because there's still a lot that has to happen for that to occur. I'm also going to be very clear that 2526 comes September, 99% sure there will be no stipend or a pay increase unless we increase student enrollment. I need each of you to help us do that. That's how we're going to get our students back. That's how we're going to get, get our students back. So that's where we are. I'll take questions from the board. You should be receiving, check your phones. You should be receiving your email now that tells you about your stipend. Questions from the board.
Thanks. I have a question. So just to clarify, no decision will be made until October, when the report comes out?
No, that's not what I said. No. We have made the decision that we will give this, this stipend. My preference at the beginning was, could we wait until October to give it? Why we're not going to wait until October is because the demog, the demographer doesn't get the data till then, and then he won't present for months. But because this rating went out, and I'm already being criticized as a district that we're giving stipends, I'm going to take the hit this year. I'm not going to take it later in the year. I'll take it now, okay? So the stipends will go out. Every employee will receive their stipend based on the ones that have been here the previous year, all right? Because we've listened to the recommendations that have come year after year. What do we do about people that have been here in longevity? We understand that. So that's what will happen. They will get it on or before December 31st, okay? And I'm not going to give you a definite on or before December 31st because we need to work through that. Okay? So does that answer that? I'm sorry if I confused that.
No, yeah, no. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm sorry I confused that. Questions from the board.
Just to connect the dots, and we know we got approval, the bond approval due to the last election, and again, thank you to the community for that. How does this negative rate, or the, the negative outlook, impact our ability to sell those bonds, and how is it going to impact our bottom line here at the district?
Yeah.
Just for everyone to know.
Right. We would like to get everyone to know. I'll let Mr. Barrigan answer, but I would want to say that, you know, Mr. Barrigan and I have, you know, spent a lot of time together the last couple of days, and, you know, we would recommend we would not sell bonds with a negative outlook. We don't want to do that. So Mr. Barrigan, if you'll address that, please.
Mr. President, members of the board, you know, the superintendent has expressed, you know, my recommendation to her is that we don't do anything as far as any bond sales until we can have a more positive outlook. And it's going to take some work, and there's some things that we're going to work on that we've already asked our financial advisor to work on, to bring to you, that really will help in the long run. And so, you know, we're moving on those things. And so I would not be my recommendation to sell bonds until the outlook improves.
With that, that concludes my report.
Any other questions?
Yes. About how often does the outlook change or get updated?
Every year they do an annual surveillance. So that's why, Board Member Hadameel, and great question, is that we will work to get that, that change. I, I will say this, not to make an excuse, it's the reality, but we were told this by Bill Davis, Mr. Barrigan, correct me if I'm wrong, that Fitch this year used different criteria to do this, and he believes that if they were to use last year's criteria, we would not have had a negative outlook, but you know, just our luck, right? So next year, we will have the opportunity to maintain our rating and go back to a stable outlook.
Okay. And that work starts now?
Yes, yes.
And another, one final question, just for the public to understand. What would happen if we sold a bond now with that rating versus waiting a year in advance? What does that difference look like?
Mr. Barrigan.
Yeah. Mr. President, members of the board, member Hadameel, you know, one of the things, and I, I don't want it lost, one of the things that superintendent mentioned, we believe that we were going to get downgraded from that AA minus. Between that and that negative outlook, you know, that could have meant that, as a taxpayer within the district, when we sold bonds, the interest rate that you all paid for would have been higher than what would have been necessary. You know, I think we're trying to understand a little bit about, we kind of split that. You know, we were able to discuss with them, keep the AA minus bond rating, but they gave us a negative outlook. I think we're, we're trying to understand that. But I would, what I would say is, I wouldn't want that information getting sent to potential investors that would want to buy those bonds when we sell. You know, we want to have and continue to be in a position, despite the challenges, to have a stable at a minimum outlook with investment-grade ratings.
And we don't want to tax our community.
So can you just, for everybody out there, explain how you can have a negative outlook and then still maintain a AA minus rating?
Mr. President, members of the board, member Wilson, you know, I think it was the conversation that the superintendent and I had with them yesterday morning, for however long it was, talking about the decisions that you've made to close schools, the changes in school boundaries, the recommendations that you approved tonight in your consent agenda, which is, as we stated in June, and I believe in July, that, you know, we're not idle. We are looking at identifying areas of efficiencies. So while revenue might be decreasing, that expenses are also being reduced so that they can offset each other as best as we possibly can.
Mr. Barrigan, could I, just so that the audience knows what that is, and you know that from your board updates, there's a recommendation tonight, you came for transportation, and to increase that pay, we still have a shortage. The reason we did that, Mr. Miranda, thank you for your work and your team's work, by doing this, he's worked months on what can we do to, one, increase, you know, the pay, but to also, you know, attract new drivers. By his plan that you approved tonight, we will anticipate saving $1.2 million, okay? So that's incredible. Currently, we're looking at special education efficiencies and what we can do. We won't have that until maybe the end of the month, maybe in October, later in October. We're looking at that, and we hope to be able to bring a $1 million savings in that as well.
Combination of all those discussions, I think they felt a little better to maintain that investment-grade ready, rating, but the biggest reason for that negative outlook, I think, as I understood it, was the decline in enrollment. You, you are looking at 38% decrease from 2014 to today. And that's based, assuming that the way that we built the budget is accurate. In other words, if it decreases more than what we projected, obviously that 38% grows, right? So you're looking at 38% decrease in enrollment since 2014.
And I know there's a lot of talk about budgeting, but it, it makes it difficult to budget when you don't know how many kids you're going to get, and you can't, you have to make adjustments on the fly, and you can't make long-term decisions with short-term information. So that's the struggle. That's, that's a, that's a really big struggle. It's not just our school district, it's with all school districts, and you know, when they switched from prior year funding, we at least had a year, a year gap to
Right.
make adjustments. But now, we are expected to make them on a, almost like a month-by-month basis. Like if you, if we lose 100 kids, that's 100 kids that we lost right now.
Right.
And what, what can we do to adjust for that? And it, it's a struggle that happens all over the state, and
It is, and we, we plan, you know, we try to project how many we were going to lose. But I can't plan anything that's going to be for sure because I don't know who's walking through the door. So it's a little different how you budget and how we receive that than we do our normal budgets. If I know my paycheck is 50 bucks a week, I know what I can do. But I don't know what it's going to be, what I'm going to get on my ADM because it's, it's a revolving door. They're in and out. We don't know that. So it's a little harder to do that.
And I think it's so important really to know why they're leaving, you know,
Absolutely.
as you brought up. We can address that much better, you know, if we know why. Of course, we know that some of them moved to charter schools, but why did they move to a charter school? There's probably some reasons there that we could address, but
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, those are important things to know.
We have a plan for that, Board Miss, Board Member Wilson as well, and we'll work on those things. We are, you know, dedicated to, you know, we'll be honest, we don't think we'll see, you know, the 14,000 students we did years and years ago, but our, you know, what we are planning for is strategies to bring families back in and at least be flatlining. If we're flatlining, you know, we can tread, we'll be okay. But other than that, it, it's going to be extremely difficult.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Tagata-Jones. Moving on to the governing board report, we'll start down at the end. Mr. Hadameel.
Thank you for that report, and thank you for continuously working hard. I know it's, from the stories, it doesn't sound easy. And I'd also like to thank the public commenters. I've always been an advocate for public commentary. So I believe that we, governing board members, are beholden to you, the community, and to the voters. We're voted in by you, so our power is directly divided from y'all. And again, just thank you, and let's celebrate today because it's the last day of a high of over 100 degrees.
If you jinxed us...
I've been told that on Twitter.
If you jinxed us, we are coming for you.
That, yeah, that is now on public record, Mr. Let, let the record reflect that Mr. Hadameel said that. Could I have that in a minute for the next meeting's approval? Ms. Wilson.
Just congratulations again to all our students that, you know, received an award tonight. It's, you know, because of your hard work that they were able to accomplish what they have. And of course, their parents as well, their, you know, families. Also, I just, I went to a law conference this last week, which was very interesting, and they did talk a lot about the various different laws that are coming down that affect schools. And of course, the one I was really interested in, not just interested in that one, but the chronic absenteeism, which is tied to our ADM, so, and can affect, you know, the amount of money that we get. So, which is why I think it's so important that we take a look at that and that not just you, but, you know, the community and parents understand what, what an absence is, when does it actually start, what part of the day, you know, how many hours does a child have to be gone for it to be, talk to an, you know, a full absentee. for it to be chalked to an, you know, a full absentee day? So at any rate, but thank you all for everything you've done. Thank you for the report. We have a lot of work to do. And we just have to keep positive thoughts.
All right, thank you. I just checked my phone to make sure Ms. Pimentel didn't have any extra comments to add. But again, she, because of her reception, she just said, congratulations to the students that were here. And I'm sure we'll hear more once she gets back into town. As for myself, thank you, Ms. Sagata-Jones, for all the information. Like Ms. Wilson said, we went to the ASB Law Conference last week. And it was probably one of their more informative conferences that they've ever had. A lot of the stuff that you saw on the slides a little bit ago, we talked about directly at the law conference. We talked about FSLA changes. We talked about, you know, declining enrollment. We talked about the absenteeism. That was really interesting. The big, the big theme of the law conference this year was AI. And, and how to use AI. And over the past week, I've used AI to generate some workshop descriptions, so I could get them in the catalog. So conference presenters would stop bugging me for workshop descriptions. They came out awesome, way better than I could ever write by myself. They were amazing. And today I made an AI-generated song in a 90s rock style about the Arizona Financial Report. So maybe Mike, Mike, you can take a listen to that later. Yes, it, it was amazing. I was so emo and rock at the same time. It was very cool. So there's, there was a lot of cool things that I learned over last week. I'm looking forward, I have, I'll be flying out to another conference next week for ASBO International. I'd be looking forward to looking, listening to the outlooks of school finance across the United States. So that will be interesting. But I'd like to end on, again, congratulations to the kids. Thank you for the parents for bringing them. If you want to talk about how to increase enrollment and get kids back in the classroom, it's celebrating people like these kids that came in here and absolutely obliterated those tests. And it is all your fault that they're up here. And maybe that's not the best term, but it is, it is a celebration of what you did to get those kids in those seats right there. And let's just keep doing that, and things will hopefully flatline. And that's what we're hoping for. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.